I'd like to bring the meeting to order. Chief Coring, are you doing the invocation, sir?
Thank you.
If you'd all rise for the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
If you bow your heads in prayer. Gracious Father, we thank you for this opportunity to gather and serve our community. We ask for your wisdom and guidance to be upon our Board of Aldermen as they deliberate on the important issues before them. Grant them clarity in thought, discernment, decision-making, and a spirit of unity as they work together for the betterment of all. May their decisions be guided by fairness, compassion, and commitment to the well-being of our city. We pray for strength and courage to face the challenges ahead and for spirit of collaboration that transcends differences that promotes the common good. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mayor.
Madam Clerk, would you read off the public comment, people please?
Mr. Larry Ashley.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Board of Aldermen, as well as good morning, Southport. I want to start off this morning by congratulating the Fourth of July Committee and others, including police, fire, public services, City Hall, community relations, the mayor, Board of Aldermen, pretty much every citizen in Southport for this past week. What a fantastic time. Fireworks are awesome. Parade was even better. It was just a great, great time and it was just fabulous. And I think it shows the work of the community coming together and really making a difference in how we have so many visitors come in and we just do this with just pure spirit. It is really awesome. I'm also interested, I wish we could know, how much money this has put into the local economy. I'll bet it was just a bizarre amount of money that came in. So it really helped all the local businesses as well as those that were vendors. So this morning, I wanted to spend a few minutes talking to you about your upcoming appointments that you have today. I took a look at the packages and the applications and I'm finding that under nine boards or committees, there are nine seats that are expiring or vacant. So the first time that this was due, on April 30th, there were 25 applicants applying for 38 different seats. All but one, all but one, which was forestry, had sufficient applications. Then it was republished again, due a week later, on May 6th. We received, we, the city, received nine additional applicants for 17 different seats. Somebody got on the phones. With the exception of cemetery, every board or committee had at least one additional applicant, including four additional planning board applications. Now, today, you have 35 applicants vying for 55, or a total of 55 seats that you have to skinny through and find them all. So here's my first concern. One time when the mayor and I were talking, he said, "If you have something to say about policy, please say it." Excuse me. So today, I want to talk about policy and I want to talk about that ordinance that you have with posting for the different committees. My first concern is the ordinance is written so strictly so that in the case of a chair or vice chair being up for reappointment, the mayor or mayor pro temp sit in. If the problem was the mayor and mayor pro temp were unable to make all the interviews causing a month-long process, that now, here we are, two months into the process and the board is just today doing appointments. I understand people have things going on, vacations, children, things like that, but you need to work that ordinance out. It doesn't really work all that well, in my opinion. Excuse me again. My second concern, based on the reposting of the positions without a vote or even an interview, particularly when all but one board or committee had sufficient applications, does not pass the sniff test. In fact, I'd venture to say that this reposting was nothing more than a mechanism to dump people that you don't like off the boards. In fact, I understand there is a move to remove Sue Hodgson from the planning board, simply because you don't like what she has to say about the mayor, or the mayor doesn't like the comments that she's made about him. Sue Hodgson and I couldn't be further apart politically, I mean, politically, way apart. But I'll defend her right for freedom of speech. But I'll defend her right for freedom of speech every single time. Before I was appointed to the planning board, I watched as Sue ran difficult meetings, staying within the confines of the law and Robert's Rules of Order, providing everyone with an opportunity to speak that wanted to. Since she has chaired the planning board, the city, with the help from the planning staff, has made great strides in bringing our UDO up to date. She has been a key contributing member of the board, and Southport would lose an important member of the planning board if you don't reappoint her. I can't help, you don't like what she has to say, but that's not the qualifier for any position on any board in our city. I can't help that you want to put friends or campaign contributors on a board. That too is not a qualifier. You must choose who is best qualified for the open or expiring position, nothing less. I want to remind you, excuse me. It was Sue Hodgson as chair of the planning board who was not requested to present the planning board findings on use of the old City Hall to the Board of Aldermen. It was Sue Hodgson as chair that requested that the planning board receive legal assistance during the recent conditional zoning deliberation. Rumor has it, it was the mayor who said it was not a good use of city resources, despite the tens of thousands of dollars spent by the city on legal work during conditional zoning. I mean, we did. We asked for help. We asked for help from the city to have legal counsel there, and we were denied it during the conditional zoning. I can't believe that even happened. It was Sue Hodgson as chair of the planning board who never has given the opportunity to present the recommendations of the planning board with respect to conditional zoning of the Board of Aldermen. She's always represented the planning board, has always been leading, has been at the front. You, as sitting members of the Board of Aldermen, have the power to appoint folks to various committees. It is not your job, it is your job not to snub committees just because you don't like what they have to say. It is not your job to appoint friends or campaign contributors to committees just because you like what they say better. It is important that you appoint folks that have a keen interest and something to offer that particular board. Anything less is not only snubbing that member that you're rejecting, or the board on which they sit, but you're also snubbing our community as a whole. Don't do that. So here's the questions, and I understand that you'll get back to me. Does the Board of Aldermen vote to post the positions? Who decided that the initial set of applications, or initial set of applicants were unqualified? Remember, every single board, with the exception of forestry, had enough people to fill those positions. So who sat there and decided that they weren't good enough? You should have at least gone through and done the interviews and said, "We want to reopen it." Shouldn't there have been a vote by the Board of Aldermen to repost? And shouldn't it have been done after the initial interviews took place? And who's, lastly, who sets the agenda for the Board of Aldermen? Thank you very much.
Bob Lambert?
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Aldermen. My name is Bob Lambert. I live at 109 West Nash Street here in Southport, and I am a new member of the planning board. I have never, prior to this, held any political office. I am pretty apolitical, as a matter of fact. But as a new member of the planning board, one of the things that I'm here for is to show my support for Chair Hodgson's. And one of the things that I want to speak about is her ability, as a leader, to teach new members and provide the history of Southport and what has taken place prior. I can't think of anyone better to learn from. And it really concerns me that there's an effort, or might be an effort, to take the most qualified, most experienced member of the planning board, which has done its best to provide community service and partisanship. And it concerns me that there's going to be a lack of experience on the board, should she not remain as chairman. I think I'd ask the Aldermen to consider that when they're making their vote. Thank you very much.
John Bovee?
Good morning, and thanks for this opportunity to speak to the board and the mayor. My name is John Bovee. I live at 305 East West Street, and I am a member of the planning board. Planning board is appointed by and serves the Board of Aldermen to provide technical and procedural support. The board has the responsibility to work under the unified development ordinance and the advantage of working outside of politics. We're tasked with the responsibility of looking over past procedures and policies while looking to the future to best serve our citizens. Our unofficial motto is, is "Do the right thing." And that has been really the, the theme of all our meetings, both the, the full meetings and the committee meetings, and, and that unofficial motto really comes from the leadership of Sue Hodgson. The first item, if you look on the website about what the responsibility of the planning board is, the first item is, and I'll read it, "Acquire and maintain in current form such basic information and materials as are necessary to an understanding of past trends, present conditions, and forces at work to cause changes in these conditions." So I'm relatively new to the planning board, but, but in my opinion, Sue is best suited to continue her role on the planning board, given the responsibilities of the planning board that I just read out. Sue welcomes input from all the members, provides focus and organization, and has an unparalleled knowledge of the history and process that is critical to the function of the planning board. I urge the board to reappoint Sue Hodgson to another term on the planning board. To me, it would be unfortunate if the planning board assignments are made on the basis of politics and not what is best for the residents of Southport. Thank you.
Fred Fiss?
Good morning. My name is Fred Fiss. I'm here to express my support for the reappointment for Sue Hodgson as a member of our Southport Planning Board. As you're aware, I have served on the planning board for approximately three years, and I'd like to express my sincere and sincere compliments and praise for Sue's leadership as the board's chair. Sue possesses exceptional knowledge and has a fair and thoughtful and open-minded approach to her responsibilities. Her succinct leadership style ensures her thoughts are well-presented and organized as she leads her meetings. Additionally, Sue demonstrates a commitment to staying informed on relevant policies, including House and Senate bills that impact our board and community. Sue's involvement extends beyond the planning board. She's actively engaged with the Garden Club of Southport, demonstrating her dedication to the well-being of our city. Sue's integrity is a hallmark of her leadership. She is not afraid to express her opinions and observations, even if they may be critical. Her contributions to our committee are invaluable. We are deeply grateful to have Sue as our chair member. Thank you very much. We're working on making the forestry committee a more glamorous committee that people will be lining out the door to join us. We're working on it.
Kevin Lachlan?
Good morning. I'm Kevin Lachlan. I'm vice chair of the planning board, and the comments I'm making today will evolve on my experience with Sue on the planning board, and it will not entail any information that was discussed by Frank Lay, Rebecca Kelly, or I at the committee hearing when recommendations were being made for the board. So that is clear, because I think that's certain information that is privileged, and I don't want to go beyond the sanctity of committee hearings. Now, the first question the board has to ask itself, you've heard from every member of the planning board, and they have spoke up and said how valuable Sue is to the planning board and the city of Southport, and their concerns about political influences. So ask yourselves, why did the board in totality feel that was necessary? First question, when you go back to deliberate, ask yourselves, why did all the members of the board come forth in unity in the manner which was happened, that happened this morning? And why was it necessary? That's when you have to look in the mirror and say, "Are we going to make the best decisions for who should be appointed on the planning board?" Because it's unequivocal that every member believes in her leadership, her education, her unselfishness, her skill, and her knowledge. And the thing that belies everything is that during the time that we have Frank and Ms. Kelly and Mr. Lay as liaisons, there's only been positive comments. There's been comments that this is the best planning board, the hardest-working planning board. And why is that? That is because of the leadership we have and how she has us work cohesively as a group. She is the one that said, "Let's have committees. Things are taking too long if we just leave it to the whole board to look at and digest over time." So when it came to the CZ, the yacht basin, signs, lighting, special committees were formed, and she helped, she selected the members that had the background, that would have the best input to make and the proper analysis, to make the proper recommendations. She didn't influence those decisions, i.e. the courthouse. That was not her idea. It was my idea, which quite frankly, Mr. Ashley, Larry opposed. We were on the committee, we worked it out, we did our investigations, and we came to an amicable conclusion, that's how a board should work. So the question that the board, I think, has put forth today is, will Sue Hodgson's be unfairly prevented from being reappointed? You, the board, are supposed to pick the best candidate from the pool of applicants. You have the eight applicants, you have the resumes. How many have been here more than two years? What experience do they have? Those are factors you can look at that I cannot divulge. Her experience has already been discussed. She's been in the city for 12 years. She's executive director of the North Carolina Board of Opticians. She has been reappointed. Well, what has changed? What now makes the board and other people in our village think that she will not be fairly appointed? So we come down to transparency. What are the criticisms? There have been none. Never has a representative of the mayor's office, the board of, this board, ever come to any member of the planning board or to Sue with any critique or criticism, or to consult with her as to why they thought maybe she was not doing anything correctly as a leader or as a member of the planning board. Has she spoken out against policies of the mayor and of this board at public statements during Board of Aldermen meetings? Yes. Has she made statements historically, going back into the background of conditional zoning, the yacht basin? Yes. Was anything she said factually incorrect? No. So is she going to be punished because she believes in educating the new members with the historical background? So the bottom line is, you, every member on this board, talked about transparency. Well, transparency is looking at everything objectively and not through political motivations or reelection. Debate and disagreement, that's the efficient use of members. That is how you run an efficient government. It's not based on cronyism, it's not based upon votes. There have been comments by people that I'm aware of, that there's certain members that believe that Sue has made statements that she vilifies that person. Critic, difference of agreement is not vilifying. There's another member of this board that has said that he was approached and asked why he voted in line with Sue so much. And that name can be provided, if you so want it. But things like that should not happen because it shows a motivation. You, the Board of Aldermen, stand for the people of Southport. You're to display strength, fairness, veracity, and you should welcome disagreement. You should welcome debate. I have one personal story that taught me a lesson very young. When I first became a, graduated law school, I had the privilege of clerking for a famous federal court judge named Oren R. Lewis in the Eastern District of Virginia. And he was known for standing up for the rights and not going with the mainstream. And when I interviewed, he asked me a question, and I asked, I told him, I said, "Well, Judge, with all due respect, I think you're wrong about that." And we went on, and later on, I was one of probably 200 applicants that was selected. And down the road, when we were talking, and after we got to know him, we're joking around, and I said, "Judge." I said, "I guess you picked me because of my intellect and Irish charm." He said, "No." I said, "Well, thanks, Judge." He said, "No, I picked you because you disagreed with me." He says, "I don't want a yes man. I want someone that's going to open my eyes, to give me the other view." That's a lesson that I learned, because differences of opinion lead to inquiry to the truth. And that's what we're asking you today. To inquire the truths, look at the merits of the person and the accomplishments they've done, and not on anything else. Because if you do that, you, the members of the board, can respectfully have done the right thing for Southport, and you will garner the respect of the voters for doing that, because you put aside political issues and put the benefits of the city forth and foremost. Now, I think, after I'm done, I think last time we were, had a comment section, you all get to comment on public comment. Unfortunately, as my wife tells me, I always like to have the last word, so it's so frustrating that we won't be able to do that here today. So I ask each one of you, the audience who's ever streaming, that whatever comments may be made contrary to what each member of this board have, ask yourselves, what information does this board have versus what the planning board has on a day-to-day interaction with Sue? And ask yourselves, what would each member reply in response to any query or statement made by this board that they can't make because they don't have that opportunity? Thank you.
Bonnie Bray?
Good morning. I am not a member of the planning board, but I am a resident who is very proud of Sue Hodgson. Her leadership during the time that she has been leading this particular planning board, I've paid close attention because there were a number of issues that were of deep concern to me. I've been nothing but proud of the work that they've done and will, and very glad that it's also part of the public record. The planning board itself deserves praise, Sue in particular, because she has led a group of highly qualified people who deeply care about the city. I'm not here, I was not here to speak on Sue's behalf, but I feel as a resident, we've been sadly underrepresented by the speakers today. They did a great job, and I appreciate them all standing up in her, to applaud her leadership. I'm here to talk about transparency. I wrote down that I wanted to talk about the budget amendment, but there's, really, I wanted to talk about transparency. You all have on your agenda today a budget amendment to transfer $575,000 out of the fund balance to apply to a contract for architecture services. fund balance to apply to a contract for architecture services to transform the old City Hall building into a police department and public meeting space. I want to start by saying that Up Your Arts had a contract with Lyle Architecture and Design to, for architectural services to renovate that building. The total of that contract was $68,000. It included adding an addition on the back, it included adding interior spacing. I don't think it's going to, it was similar to the police department, but a lot of what the police department is working with is already part of the architecture of the building. So the difference in the price is just amazing. But to get to the transparency part, you have in the budget amendment, you state, the budget amendment states that on March 3, 2025, the Board of Alderman voted to designate the old City Hall building for use by the police department and serve as the board chambers and asked the planning board for a recommendation. And on April 10, 2025, the board made the final vote to move forward with plans to use the old City Hall in that manner. And on, in the meantime, well, after that decision was made, an RFQ went out and six architectural firms responded. On May 28, the Mosley Architects was selected to work after staff committee recommendation. So all throughout the budget process this spring, this Board of Alderman has known and finalized it May 28, that it needed to spend $575,000 in order to contract with Mosley Architects. Letting alone the amount, I find it incredibly hypocritical to have just passed a budget for fiscal '26 that did not include this $575,000 transfer from the general fund. And more to the point, you all have pratted yourselves on the back for passing a budget that did not appropriate money from the fund balance. And yet, here we are, the very first meeting out of the box of the new year, this is exactly what you're doing. I just, I can't even believe it. It just is amazing that you all can do this with a straight face.
I have one email, public comment, that was sent in last night.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Vinnie, until last October, I was a member of the Southport Planning Board, at which my wife and I had to make the hard decision to leave Southport after almost 20 years as residents. During the time, we watched our little town rapidly grow from being a sleepy river town to one where everyone from everywhere wants to live, shop and enjoy, so much so that it started losing a sudden battle to keep its identity. Add to that the unexpected loss of its ETJ, Southport was and is at risk of being why we all moved there. That is why I said yes when I asked to become a planning board member, realizing that planning was a major way to help guide its growth. That understanding came from practicing landscape architecture and land planning for over 50 years, working with many planning boards and elected officials. Prior to me becoming a member and then becoming a member, it became obvious that the past and present board members all have the desire and knowledge to guide our town carefully into the future. Of all, Sue Hodgins has been a leader, one who fully understands the challenges facing Southport and has had the wisdom to make hard decisions, sometimes when those decisions at the time were unpopular. In these difficult times, please consider Ms. Hodgins' reappointment to continue assisting in the guide, guiding the planning board and assisting with many other important and difficult planning decisions that continue facing Southport. Thank you, Roy Pender. And that's all.
Thank you, ma'am. The next agenda item is the approval of the agenda. Is there any motions to adjust the agenda?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remove item G3 as it relates to the old City Hall courthouse and postpone that to a time in the future.
Do you have a time in mind?
Well, I think, I think we can come together as a group and look at our calendars and have a, I would, I'd like to see a special meeting as it relates to this, but.
So later on, if this is approved, there'll be, we're going to go into closed session at the end of it. And it's not going to be a secret, but when you're doing contracts, they're in closed session. We don't paste them on the wall here as we're in the middle of them, okay? So we're going to go into closed session about the, about the contract. No contract has been approved by the Board of Alderman for any architectural design yet. A recommendation has been made, and that's what has been put before this board, which Alderman Carroll is asking us to postpone on. So is there a second to Mr. Carroll's motion? There's a motion and a second? Is there any discussion?
Yeah. I just want to make sure that there, I don't know if this is the appropriate time to ask, but there are three firms in here that I specifically hope we can work with their schedule to get them to come to a meeting to answer our questions and that sort of thing.
I think all of those questions will be answered when we go into closed session.
Okay, thank you.
You will not be unhappy. How's that? Any other comments? She'll be happy about the answer to that question. How's that? Not hearing any other comments, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? It's unanimous. That item will be removed from the agenda. So the next agenda item is the Southport Specialty, I'm sorry, is there a motion to approve the agenda with the removal of that agenda item? There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? The next agenda item is the Specialty License Plate? Oh, I'm sorry. I, you're right, I didn't have my glasses on when I was looking down. I apologize. So the next one is the Special Recognition of Parks and Recreation Month. I'm going to go up to the podium, and Heather, you're here, right? Oh, there you are. Would you meet me up at the podium, please? As we all know, Parks and Recreation holds a special part in all municipalities. It's a lifeblood, whether it's at the kid level, the adult level, no matter what level it is. And obviously, our parks are a tremendous asset, and probably the biggest draw is that thing right out there, that beautiful piece of land out there. So in honor of National Park Recreation Month, whereas the City of Southport's Board of Alderman recognizes that the parks and recreation field is a diverse and comprehensive system that improves personal well-being, fosters social connectedness, safeguards the environment, and whereas quality parks, recreational facilities and community programs enhance Southport's livability, attract visitors and help make our city a desirable place to live, work, retire and play. And whereas dedicated park and recreation professionals plan, build, maintain and program those facilities, strengthening the community cohesiveness and resilience, connecting people with nature and one another, and promoting opportunities for healthy living, social equity and environmental stewardship. And whereas the Board of Alderman values the, I'm sorry, the vital work performed every day by Southport's Parks and Recreation staff and volunteers, providing safe, inclusive and welcoming spaces, offering lifelong learning and recreational opportunities for children, youth, adults and older adults. Frank, that'd be you and I. And preserving the natural beauty and historic character that define our cultural community. Now therefore, be it resolved, the City of Southport Board of Alderman does hereby proclaim July as Park and Recreation Month in Southport, North Carolina, adopted this day, the 7th day of July, 2025. And I've asked Heather to stand up because she is our leader in the Parks and Recreation, she's the Parks and Recreation Director. And Heather, do you have anything you want to say?
Of course, we are only as good as the support that we get. So, yeah, I want to thank the board and the citizens and the staff of the city for the amazing support that we get. And I also would like to recognize some of the behind-the-scenes workers, which, or volunteers, which three of them are in the audience, they're on the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee.
Could you stand up?
Emma Thomas, Roberta Dozier and Stephanie Jackson. And just one more piece of information, on Friday, July 18, from 2:00 to 3:00 in Franklin Square Park, we're going to be giving out free snow cones and have my staff and those from the committee that could be there for the public to come meet us. If you haven't, talk to us, ask questions. We, you know, love new ideas because the recreation field is constantly changing and we want to offer what you will participate in. So just keep that in mind, but it will be going out also on our website and newsletter and social media.
And thank you, Mark, for my, catching my oversight. So the next agenda item is the Specialty License Plate?
Good morning, Mayor and Board and those of y'all in the audience and at home. This has been a long time coming, so I'm excited to present the finalists to y'all for the Southport Specialty License Plate. In total, we had 26 submissions. The top six have been selected based on a staff jury. The submissions were shared with the jury with all identifiers removed, so it was completely non-biased, and it was a numerical ranking system. There was a rubric attached, not just, oh, this one's pretty, I like this one. There were characteristics and categories that had to be ranked appropriately for the jury. All options are designs from the community, so that does, that means that we will require, we have to have 500 pre-registrations for the NC General Assembly to even consider putting that into next year's or whichever year we're able to get it to them's upcoming budget. The submissions were submitted by Vinnie, which was in collaboration with the Community Relations Department, so huge shout out to them for letting us use their platform. And in no particular order, you do have them in your packets, but I do have them on the screen as well, so that way we can see them all together as one. And if you have any questions, feel free to stop me. Option one. Option two.
I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
How do you plan to get seven unique individuals who are sitting up here, who do not walk in lockstep with anybody regardless of what you may have heard earlier tonight, to vote on this? How do you, how do you plan to do this?
That's a great question. So that's really it, like, we can have discussion. I know that the rules of order, you're supposed to make a motion and then discuss, so I don't know if that is.
Well, the issue that I have, and I do have a favorite, is that when it comes to art, it's the beauties in the eye of the beholder. As we have. Well, you're the beholder, as we have seen in another event in Southport recently. So I just, I hope that we can get to this relatively quickly. Go ahead, ma'am. I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
No, you're totally fine. We did try, that was part of the reason why we wanted to narrow it down as much as possible. We wanted to keep it between three and five, but based on the ranking, like, the scores of the rubrics, that's why we ended up with six. So hopefully, we can make a decision. It will be a hard decision, they're all really great pieces, but if we need to table and wait until Thursday or next month, we can do that as well.
I've got a better idea.
Okay, yes, sir.
All six of us could vote for each and then leave it up to the, to the mayor.
I'm going to have to write this date down. Left anything to me?
Yeah. The first, the first one.
So, yes, you could, let's say there's two overall you like, somebody can nominate that one, and then we can go down the line and you can essentially straw poll it what the majority is.
Okay.
Well, I nominate no option one. Is that what we're doing?
So all six has their own slide, and then at the end, they'll be all together as one, so that way you can look at them side by side. So, option one. Option two. Option three. Yes, sir. Option four. Option five. Option six. I feel like I'm at the eye doctor. And then this is all six together, same order, top, the ones on top, 1, 2, 3, ones on the bottom, 4, 5, 6.
I think we.
Thank you.
To be heard.
I was the one with the microphone off.
Alderman Davis, would you please go forward?
Thank you. I would like to nominate number one. The other five are really good. I don't think, the reason I'm choosing this one is you can see it and know what it is from at least two or three cars away. And the others, the images are a little too small to actually be seen and identified as this is a Southport license plate. But I commend all the others. I really enjoyed looking at them. So I move number one.
Is there a second to that motion? There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, not hearing any discussion. All in favor, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
I'm sorry, you said aye. So it's three to three?
We got our prediction.
I know this is highly irregular, and I will only go forward if you agree with the irregularity. I could vote right now, and we could pick one, but this side of the table would like to be heard on their choice. Can we, can we see what hap, so we know it's three, three for one, okay? And if we, so, Mark, did you have a motion that you want to make?
My motion would be for the number three.
All right, is there a second to number three?
I ain't got no support around here.
Okay. Is there any other favorites?
I like number two.
Two, two is the alternate, the tower and then those, those towers down at Royce's are probably iconic for us.
So we have a motion for number two. Is there a second for number two?
Second.
Is there any comment? All in favor.
Can we comment on it before we vote?
Absolutely.
The, what I would say from a graphics standpoint, that it's really difficult to read the word "Southport." I appreciate that as a piece of art. It's a, it would be a beautiful piece of art and a bigger scale, but on a license plate that's this big, the difference from a graphics standpoint, not that I don't love it because I love it. I mean, I want it for my wall, you know, but, but I think if we're looking at it from a graphics standpoint, the strongest graphic.
a graphics standpoint, the strongest graphics are option one.
All in favor of number two, please say aye and raise your hand. All right, that's two. Is there any other motions? I'm going to go back to asking, who did one, you did one. Could you make your motion again?
I move that the Southport license plate selection be, plate number one.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? You're opposing? Okay, it's five to one. Thank you very much.
It was. Thank you, Mayor and Board. I know this has been a bit of a process, but I appreciate your patience for it. The marketing campaign blanks have been already created, so it will be available to start going out on social media in the upcoming newsletter in August as well, but by your meeting on Thursday, we'll be able to make an announcement that folks can start putting in their preregistrations. So, thank you again for.
Who gets to buy the first one?
Whoever sees me after the meeting first.
Darn. How big of a market is this going to be available to? Is this just people that are in the city limits of Southport?
Entire state of Southport.
And state of Southport.
Entire state of North Carolina.
You're exactly right.
The entire state of North Carolina will have access to it once it is approved. They, anybody in North Carolina can also put a preregistration in. So that way, from the mountains to the coast, everybody will know about Southport.
Might as well, we give it away anyway, so.
Does there have to be a minimum number sold before they're printed?
500, before it can go to the General Assembly.
So, so this is a possibility, this will never happen?
Now, Mr. Lay.
Is this, is this a possibility it might not ever happen?
I, I have faith, I have faith in the people of North Carolina and the people of Southport specifically and the 28461 zip code, that we will hit the 500 mark. My goal is to have the application and 500 preregistrations and the money's ready to be sent to the General Assembly by February 15th, 2026. So that way it can be in the next, the 2026 session. For some reason, if we do not hit that, then we will continue doing preregistrations until the 2027 general session. And we'll just keep doing it until we have it.
Right, I've been told I'm going to be buying one of those, so I don't want to be beat up anymore if we don't get the 500.
Well, if you're going to buy one, you might as well buy two. Put one on your golf cart, too. And, sorry, Chief, I know you like the stickers, but.
What's the revenue projection?
If we have 500 at $30 a plate, we get $10, we get $20 of that, the state special fund will get $10 of it. So if we minimum, if we hit the minimum of 500, the first year we will have at least a $10,000 profit for it. That will then go back into the public information and emergency communications. So working with, out of my office, and then working with public services and emergency services to make sure that we're continuing to improve our emergency management initiatives.
Thank you. And I also want to just say thank you to everyone who did create art for this. It's pretty incredible that we come together like that as a town, so.
Absolutely.
Any other comment? Thank you, everybody. The next topic is the Low White Bridge Project. Bob Jarvis, you're up, sir.
Good morning. As you are all aware, the Low White Footbridge connects Low White Park to the East Brown Street area. Inspections of the superstructure components of the bridge over the past few years have revealed deteriorated portions of the wood pile caps, stringers, decking, and handrails. Staff has recognized the ongoing deterioration and the bridge rehabilitation project was included in our capital improvement program some years ago. Recent inspections have revealed accelerated deterioration and the need to schedule the rehabilitation project sooner rather than later. The project we're proposing will involve the demolition and disposal of deteriorated existing walkway elements and the replacement of the soup, of that superstructure with new concrete and timber components. The contractor has indicated that the work could be completed with about, within about four weeks of commencing construction. And he expects that the construction could commence by mid-August after permitting is secured and after the materials have been delivered to the site. Staff sought quotes from qualified contractors and is proposing that the city enter into an agreement with McPherson Marine Services, who is no stranger to work within the city. Their work has been performed by, by all accounts in a very timely manner and the construction has been of, of the utmost quality. So with that, I will answer questions you may have.
Other questions from the board? I think the, the document we got was pretty self-explanatory and it's been a topic that we've been talking about for quite some time, so.
Thank you.
With that, is there any, is there a motion to be made?
You.
Go ahead.
Motion to authorize the contract with McPherson Marine Services for the construction of Low White Park Bridge improvements and appropriate $200,000 for the project.
Is there a second to that motion? There's a motion and a second? Is there any discussion on the topic? Not hearing any. All in favor, please say aye and raise your hand. Are there any opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All right, the next topic up is the Board and Committee Appointments. And the first one up is the Airport Commission. This is a commission that many people didn't even know we had a commission, but we do have, we've had it for years. And the person represents the city of Southport at the airport and the construction that goes on there and the risk factors that go on there and the insurance and all of that stuff as it, as it impacts the economic well-being of the region. So we're on that panel. Myself and Colonel Gore were the people who interviewed the three candidates, all three candidate, all three candidates were very enthusiastic about being, being considered. And after careful consideration, the, just a little history, the airport is in the process of adding a new taxiway. The airport is in the process of doubling the number of hangars that they have. They've been given an $18 million grant from the state to do that. And so there's a lot of that stuff going on, that, the technical stuff. After careful consideration, Colonel Gore and I unanimously agreed that Frederick Guerera, Flick, as he's commonly heard of, it was the one that we chose to recommend to the Board of Alderman on that. Mr. Guerera has extensive experience in building runways, in repairing runways, in overseeing Air Force bases and stuff like that. And so that was the deciding factor why we're making that recommendation. So.
Second.
Yes. So I've never actually sat here and done this, so I'm not sure that most of the time I cannot make a recommendation.
I'll make a motion that we approve Frederick Guerino, Flick, is, is we're also.
Is there a second to that motion? There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor of, of Mr. Guerera, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Any oppose? It's unanimous. Thank you very much. The next committee up is the Beautification Committee. Alderman Moss Teller.
Thank you. One of the things I want to start off by saying, I noticed that the mayor also said they were unanimous in their interview committee for their recommendation. And so that last year, in response to lack of consensus within the interviewing committee regarding applicant recommendations, last year Alderman Davis recommended that those recommendations be done one at a time as individual motions and we voted on that as a motion. So I'm only saying that because I'm going to represent this as a slate because we were, the interview committee was unanimous in the recommendations. So I was going to, because I have several recommendations, not just one candidate. And, but first, I'd like to take a moment to recognize some of the work of the beautification volunteers. Staining benches, swings, picnic tables along Bay Street and in all of our parks and other areas. Building and repairing benches, swings, picnic tables, as requested by the Parks and Recs Department. Working with Public Works and partnering with the Historical Society, the beautification participates in the annual installation of the commemorative bricks in the front sidewalk of the visitor center here at Fort Johnston. The Beautification Committee helps maintain the yacht basin boat displayed on the corner of Bay and Caswell. The committee preps and repaints the city's existing old wooden signs in prominent areas like Waterfront Park, City Pier, Old Jail, Smithfield Burying Grounds, and the John Smith Cemetery, and so on. Beautification routinely takes care of about 15 stewardship garden spots around town, planting, weeding, watering, mulching, and pruning. Beautification helps with branch and debris pickup after major storms and twice a year the committee cleans the historic markers around town. Every year, beautification tags the poles for the final placement of the sailboat, sailboat wreaths, and they do that as well for the placement of the art banners. This is a simply a small list, just a few of the highlights, and certainly does not include everything or the cleanups and landscape maintenance that beautification volunteers do every Saturday once a month and all the individual pop-up work events that may occur throughout the month. So it is my honor to be the liaison of the Beautification Committee. As liaison, I have witnessed firsthand the work and commitment demonstrated by the current members of the Beautification Committee, the citizen and the citizens that have attended the workdays. Beautification Committee volunteer interviews were completed on June 10th and I want to thank all of the applicants for expressing their desire to serve. There were more applicants than seats on the committee. I want to encourage all of the applicants, if they have not had the opportunity before, to plan on attending the meetings and the workdays and actively supporting the mission of the committee. To be successful, everyone's participation is important. Respectfully, we submit for board consideration the following recommendations to fill the six vacancies on the Beautification Committee. First, recognizing the value of continuity and experience. The interview committee recommends reappointing and renewing the terms of four applicants presently serving as Beautification Committee members. They are Lynn Gaiman, who is currently serving as committee chair, Scott Bushman, Rob Thatcher, and Ken Gaiman. Each of these individuals have contributed greatly to the team and success of the Beautification Committee. Our community is certainly better for their commitment. And to fill the additional two vacancies, we recommend the appointment of Annabelle Pavernick and Rick Mitchell. Both Ms. Pavernick and Mr. Mitchell have demonstrated an interest and have supported the work of the Beautification Committee by participating in the monthly Saturday beautification cleanups. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Lynn Gaiman, Scott Bushman, Rob Thatcher, and Ken Gaiman to serve and appoint Annabelle Pavernick and Rick Mitchell as new members to the Beautification Committee.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to go back to the statement you made at the front of your comments. So we made a, a motion in a previous meeting to, to.
If, if, if we, if the nominating committee was, was not in consensus, then we would entertain each of the applicants one at a time. Look, that was, I mean, yeah, I went back just looking, yeah.
And, so that, I'm sorry, go ahead.
But we're in consensus.
I'm not against these appointments. Some of them are some of my favorite people. They're not all residents of Southport, so beautification is open to anyone.
Well, beautification, the, it is open. I think there, there may be, I'm not sure if there's a mileage thing, but it, we allow up to three members outside of the city, proper, yes. And it's limited to that. Because beautification, it's in the way the ordinance is written and it's because beautification is a, not a policy committee, it's a work committee, so we'll take everybody's work.
We're thankful for people that come and help us. We really don't need to alienate anyone, but it's become, there's become a dividing line, it seems.
Yeah, Mark, I can't remember if you were on the board when that vote came up. There was a discussion about, I think that's the only committee that really doesn't have much pol, policy part of it. And we, the board, I believe, was unanimous in agreeing to that back when we did that.
Oh, I just want to clarify that six have to be in the legal city limits and the others can live in a general 28461 area code.
I could never vote against Ms. Lynn, so I do what I got to do.
All right, any other comments? All in favor of the nomination slate as presented, please say aye and raise your hand. Is there any oppose? It's unanimous. Thank you. Next one is the Board of Adjustment, Alderman Spencer.
I really, really appreciate you appointing me to this board. It has been a bundle of joy. Made me a lot of friends and made me real popular.
At least it's now being filmed, so we can, we can go back and look at it.
Made a lot of friends in this, being the liaison to this thing. Myself, Chairman Pete Haslip, and member Tuck Masters met. Several candidates were interviewed, there was only one position available. The recommendation is for Jake, Jason Robbins to be reappointed for a three-year term, and that's my motion.
There's a motion and a second, is, is there any comment? The only comment I have for you, Mark, was it unanimous?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other comments? All in favor, say aye. Any oppose? It's unanimous, thank you very much. The next one is the Cemetery Committee.
Now, I'm more thorough on this because I have a great chairman on my cemetery committee. And I'm very fond of my, this, I call it my cemetery committee because I'm going to be buried there, so it's my committee, whether people don't like that or not, I'm going to be there. So we did do a, interviews on Friday, the June, the 19th. Myself and Mr. Ashley were the only two. Tish Hayden was the vice chairman and she wasn't able to interview herself. So we had, we had three, three interviewees, two positions. I'm going to make a motion for Tish Hayden and William Ben Smith to be appointed to the Board of Adjustment. Cemetery, yes, sir, thank you, thank you, thank you. I did, I want to mention the third lady, Heather Cosse. Heather lives on Park Avenue and she has been flooding and having hard times and she came and she applied for these committees and she said, "I can't complain if I don't try to be a part of it." And I really, we've got to find her a place to, to be in our, in our community because she wanted, she came out and she tried. The only reason she didn't go on is, is one of the gentlemen was very into liability ins- The only reason she didn't go on is, is one of the gentlemen was very into liability insurance and, and all the things that we have to face with our Smithfield cemeteries and things. So it was expert knowledge that we had to grab a hold of. So we appreciate all of them applying, and we want our citizens to apply because you got to take part. So again, motions for Tish Hayden and Ben Smith to the Cemetery Committee.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any comment? Not hearing any. All in favor, say aye and raise your hand. Is there any oppose? It's unanimous. Thank you. The next one is the Forestry Committee. Alderman Moss Teller.
Thank you, sir. In 2025, the city was awarded Tree City USA designation for the 21st year. This in large measure reflects much of the work of the forestry committee. Whether it's the committee's annual Arbor Day celebration, or the annual tree planting program, or their recommendations for tree ordinance updates, or the supportive relationship they maintain with the North Carolina Forestry Service, or the support they provide city departments, and the time the committee invests every month in educating and advising citizens on best practices. These are just a few of their accomplishments to illustrate the quality of life, that the quality of life in our community is better for the work of our Southport Forestry Committee volunteers. That, with that said, a total of five applications were received requesting appointment or reappointment to the committee. Fred Fiss, Heather Cosse, William Biff Bream, and Mary Ann Hartley reapplied to remain on the committee for another term, and William Ben Smith was a first-time applicant. All five candidates expressed a desire to serve or continue to serve the community as a member of the committee. Each of the candidates would be an asset to the committee. Importantly, the incumbent assets have several years of valuable experience with the committee already, and Mr. Smith would bring a wealth of knowledge applicable to the committee's efforts. Based on these interviews, the following recommendations are made to the Board of Aldermen with regard to the appointments. I would like to make a motion to fill the five vacancies as follows. Reappoint Mr. Fred Fiss to a full member. Reappoint Mary Ann Hartley to the committee as a full member. Reappoint Heather, Heather Ha, Ha, Heather Cosse to the committee as a full member. Reappoint Mr. Biff Bream to the committee as a full member, and appoint Mr. Ben Smith to the committee as a full member.
Is there a second to that motion? There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Not hearing any. All in favor, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Any oppose? It's unanimous. Thank you.
Preservation Commission, call Kelly.
So we had a total of seven applications, six interviews, and three open spots. Myself and Alderman Kelly did the interviews, as Charles Drew, the chair, was unable to interview himself. He might have come to the same conclusion, though. So Charles Drew, Alexis Graves, and Bonnie Bray all applied. And it is my recommendation that we reappoint Charles Drew as a full member, Alexis as a full member, Bonnie moving from an alternate position to a full member, and adding Catherine Huffam, who has tons of Southport experience, knowledge, history, as a alternate.
Is there a second to that motion? There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I just want to point out, this was unanimous from the committee. This was unanimous.
Not hearing any other discussion. All in favor, please say aye and raise your hand. Any oppose? It's unanimous. Thank you. The next one up is the Parks and Recreation Committee, and that is Alderman Davis.
Thank you. Before I talk about Parks and Recreation, I'd like to say this. And it's important to keep in mind that we should avoid assigning motives and then criticizing people for the motives that you think that they have. To my knowledge, personally, there's been no politicking, there's been no back and forth or lack of transparency on this board in the selections. And I'm personally offended at the multiple suggestions that the decisions have been made based on favoritism or reward for political support. I haven't seen that on this board in any of these nominations. Now, Parks and Recreation. We had nine applicants. One withdrew because they were not moving to Southport in time. And we had to stretch these interviews over several days, and then we remet to go over very closely and with a lot of discussion. The applications and what people said in interviews, because this is a very important committee. And we have come up with, I think, a very good slate, and it is unanimous. First, we used to have an ETJ member, and we changed that in January to be an at-large member. And that member was selected in January, Andrew Brosh, and we have nominated him to continue for a full three-year term. The term of the ETJ member expired as soon as, was due to expire this month. But, so Andrew filled that from January to June, and he has been a very active member. His background includes a career running boys and girls clubs, and he has some excellent ideas that we're, the committee is working on right now. In Ward Two, we had three openings. Christine Wright, who is a podiatrist, who is currently very active with other people in developing some exercise programs down at Taylor Field. She has many ideas for other things for Parks and Recreation. This is somebody whose name you've already heard, Annabelle Pavernick. She is a, she actually has a college degree in recreation leadership. She has many ideas, and we think she'll be a tremendous asset. And finally, someone who has been on this committee for 25 years and has served well, and we greatly appreciate continuity and experience and historical context that she's able to add to things, and that is Roberta Dozier.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Not hearing any. All in favor, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Is there any oppose? It's unanimous. Thank you. And that brings us to the Planning Board, which is Alderman Kelly and Alderman Lay.
Talk about a tough job. We had started off with eight candidates. Alderman Kelly, myself, and Mr. Lachlan did the interviews. We spent days going over these things. The qualifications, when we narrowed it down, we had four exceptionally strong candidates. Candidates that would, you'd be happy to have on anything. I've never seen candidates this strong. The, the leadership abilities that we're seeing in these candidates is incredible. After numerous conversations, sit-down sessions, weeping, wailing, gnashing of teeth, and so forth and so on, we narrowed it down to three, and we have unanimous agreement on those three. They are Doug Lu, L U E C, L U E H E, Maria Horton, and Ed Eckert. We had unanimous agreement on all three. Sorry.
So then we'll present those individually?
Again?
In keeping with the...
Would you talk about the qualification?
Yes.
Yeah.
Hold on. Doug is a mechanical engineer, general engineer, staff, chief of staff, Region Nine Environmental Protection Agency. Has degrees in engineering. Retired Colonel. Maria Horton, retired from the Navy. All kinds of experience, consultant, similar retired decision, numerous other things here. And the last one, Ed Eckert, another engineer. That was, and the fourth one that we did not have unanimous agreement on was current Chair, Sue Hodgins. We recommended the first three that I brought up.
So again, let's take those one at a time.
I'll get that.
Correct.
That's okay. So Frank, if you would be so kind as to make, make a recommendation one at a time, and we'll do votes on one at a time, sir.
Okay, yep. Start off with Maria Horton.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I don't know if this is the appropriate time to have discussions, because if you're not going to make a recommendation to reappoint a member in good standing, I think I need context for that recommendation. Before I vote on any of these three, I need to understand not reappointing a member in good standing.
We had fabulous people apply, and there's no precedent to have to reappoint someone who's on the board already. So we are looking to give opportunities to people who've stood up and said that they want to help Southport also.
What I would say is that these, if, if we do not reappoint someone that has experience and for continuity on the board, if we appoint these three that you're talking about, 75% of the board will have been there less than six months. Mr., one of the people has only lived in Southport one year. So the, the other three years and the other five years. So I'm, I'm struggling here, to be honest.
That's, I mean, that's...
Yes, there's a motion and a second, and so we're having a discussion point. Robert, do you have something?
Well, I mean, that's, that's a good point that I wasn't aware of. 75% of the board being less than six months?
If we don't put, reappoint the chair, who is clear that has the support of her peers and is valuable, if you look at her resume, her experience sitting on the board is invaluable to the board. And then we, so I, I just, I, I just want us to be clear on that conversation. And I'm, and I'm struggling still, as I said, struggling to understand in what universe we would not do that.
All right, there's a motion on the floor, and there's a second. Is there any other comments?
Would you would say motion?
The motion is for Marie Horton. Okay. Maria, I'm sorry, Maria Horton. All in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye and raise your hand. Any oppose? Do you oppose? Five to one then. Frank, would you do the next one, please?
Yes, the next one was Doug, L U H E. Retired engineer, retired Army Colonel, wealth of experience. None of the people that we had had a lot of time in Southport, except for Doug. He'd been here like 12 or 15 years.
I'm sorry, when you say Doug, is that the one you're, who are you nominating right now?
We, we were unanimous on Doug.
Yeah. But he is, he has only been in Southport one year.
Yes, and I think that Frank misspoke on that. But yes, we were unanimous on Doug as well.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second to the motion? There's a motion and a second. Is there any conversation? Not hearing any. All in favor, say aye and raise your hand. Any oppose? It's five to one.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Sue Hodgins to the Planning Board.
I'm glad you did that.
I mean, don't we typically hear from the...
Because you have the right to. You have the right to. We've been, we've been politically correct for too long. This is the board's appointment. It is to serve the board, not for the, these committees to tell us who they want on these boards. So you have a right to make your motion, and I'm glad you did that, because you have a right to do that. And so go ahead and continue on, but this is the board's decision, not a committee's decision. And when a committee comes and they're adverse to what we want, would you want that board to be serving you?
So there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second to the motion? I'm sorry? So there's a motion and a second. Is there any conversation on that?
The answer is yes. To Mark's question, I appreciate your comment, but yes, I do want people that disagree with me. That's one of the things that makes us work well together, you and me, is that we're not on the same side of this table. We're not on the same side of the...
They did that on purpose.
I think I used to have that, see?
I can throw shoes from here.
But, I mean, that's the whole point in this. Oh, so everybody should stand in line? Yes, men, yes, women.
There was an election, and there was a winner.
And there's going to be another one.
And there will be, and the, and that winner should be able to have the group that will help empower the agenda that they were elected on. But when there's compromise and conflict in our committees and political activism in our committees, it compromises what we're doing.
Because citizens come to public comment here and make their comments known.
All of them. These are committee members that came, all the committee members.
No, I'm not talking about today. I'm talking about in general. People, all of our citizens, regardless of sitting on a committee or not, are entitled to free speech. They're entitled to not be penalized in some arbitrary way because they've, they've criticized us. Mark, we're used to being criticized, you know? That's, we signed up for that, y'all. And so I, I can't tell you, but it cannot influence what we do. I'm, I'm just going to say this. Sue Hodgins has worked since she's been on the committee. She's done Leadership Brunswick course, completed that course. I went through the, the packet, and she participated in development of the city's comprehensive plan update by serving as a stakeholder committee meeting, and has attended other workshops like Historic Resilience Workshop, along with other Planning Board volunteers. So they're here to say that they appreciate her leadership. They're not telling us what to do. They're asking to have the strong... They're asking to have the strongest board they can have, which I think that's legitimate. I'd rather people show up and tell me what they think than not, but.
That was a lobbying effort.
But this is someone who brings all these assets. This is someone that.
That happens on both sides of this table.
Okay.
That happens on both sides. Let me ask, can I ask a question? In what world does seventy-five percent of a board being less than six months make sense?
You don't believe in new ideas?
You don't want new ideas. You want people standing behind your thought process. You've said it.
All right, calm down. I, debate is good, but raising raising our voices is not. Okay. Is there any other comment? There's a motion on the floor and there's a second to that motion. The motion is for Sue Hudgens.
I feel like I need to talk about the other candidate before we vote.
Yes, ma'am. Now she has the opportunity to speak at this time.
So. Ed comes with a background of engineering and operations for Fortune Fifty and smaller companies. He believes in reaching consensus on topics and stakeholder management and he was well received and one of the reasons was in addition to being concerned about the development of and how it affects wetlands in the area and our water issues that we have. He's been on the other side presenting to planning boards around the with all of the larger companies that he's worked with as well. So he brings the experience of both sides of the table to this as well. So I think that that engineering background and that Fortune Fifty presentation style is something that will serve Southport extremely well.
Any other comments?
Yes. I I I think legacy knowledge is so important, especially for our planning board. Our old, the longest serving, there'll be one member that's been there three years and one member that's been there two years. So the rest of them will have six months or less if we if we don't reappoint. I I I just see that as bizarre. And quite honestly, back in January, there was supposed to be a fifth person appointed that somehow changed between getting the packet and being at the table. And so we left that that alternate slot vacant and that was never really explained. So anyway, I I just think this is strange and that person had also participated in the comprehensive plan update as a stakeholder that we had appointed them to that committee. So not honoring their investment as volunteers is problematic.
I don't know. Could you, could you, why was Ms. Hodgins not qualified? Can anybody that interviewed the applicants suggest that?
We didn't say she wasn't qualified. That was never part of the conversation here.
So what has she done to not continue to serve? To not have that opportunity? I I just want to know so that we're.
No, she, she hasn't done anything to not be, we just had other candidates that were a great opportunity for Southport as well.
So with this motion on the floor, the vote is for Sue Hodgins. You're saying she's qualified.
I'm saying I didn't say she wasn't qualified.
So that means you could vote for her.
Oh, Robert, that's that that whole line of thought is wrong. The question, and and I I'm not voting in this whole thing, okay? So it doesn't make any difference. I don't. I have no idea what's going to, listen. I never know what's happening on the on this board until I I see hands go up. So the question really is, is if you can be qualified, as there was people in Parks and Rec, as there are other places, there are qualified people. And we put people on to look to make a decision about who's the most qualified. Whether, I'm not, I'm not judging that right now. But that is the recommendation from the people that we sent to go off and do that. That's their recommendation. And the question that we have now, as to to echo what Mark said, the decision is not by anybody other than the six of you. And so who goes on the board is based on what the six of you decide you want to do. So are there, is there any more comment? If there's no more comment, then the motion is for Sue and the, there's a second to that? Go ahead, ma'am.
Yes, there's, there's a second. What, I don't know. The vice chair, what?
Everyone agrees she's qualified. What came up in the conversations were criticisms. A, there was criticisms of terrorist emails to say mo over issues. There was a criticism over she's divisive, which I have no idea what that means other than she disagrees with. There were, other than that, there were no substantive criticisms. And there's been a comment about lobbying. We reject that comment or with all due respect to your position. No, because, no, I'm calling you on it because you were the one that went to Will Hewitt and asked him why he votes in line. Just let me finish, sir. Sir, sir, let me finish.
Gentlemen.
Let me finish, sir. Be respectful. I know it's difficult. You're the one that went to him and at the behest of the mayor, asking why he votes in line and Will Hewitt, no.
That is a misrepresentation and you're a lawyer, you know better. You know better. Will Hewitt is part of my family. He eats Thanksgiving dinner with me. He don't, I don't go to him for nothing.
I spoke with him this morning at eight thirty-five, sir.
Okay, where's he at?
Mark. There's been a lot said today and as long as you're not hanging on the truth, there's a lot of words I've said, okay? And so as Alderman Mosteller has pointed out, they have the opportunity to spin it whether it has truth or not. And we just, we take that. So I don't want to have screaming matches on the floor here, please. Okay. Frank, could you hit your button, please?
No, sorry.
So there's a motion on the floor. There's a second. We've had comment. I do not want to cut off comment if there's more comment to be had. But not seeing any, all in favor of the motion as it was, please say aye and raise your hand. All against. It appears to be four to two. So now Alderman Lay or Alderman Kelly, would you move on?
We would like to appoint Ed Eckert to the alternate, as the alternate member to the planning board.
Is there a second to that motion?
I did not hear.
We would like to appoint Ed Eckert as the alternate member for the planning board.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any conversation? Not hearing any, all in favor, please say aye and raise your hand. All oppose? It looks like it's four to two to me. Thank you very much, everybody. We're going to go on to the next agenda item, which is the committee reports, which are in your, in your folder there. And next, the manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. I want to take an opportunity to say what a great Fourth of July Festival week we had here in Southport. I want to especially thank our city staff, the Fourth of July Committee and all of our volunteers, especially the nearby agencies and state agencies that they came out to support us and make sure everyone was safe. A particular shout out to Community Relations Director Elena Taylor and her staff, Chief Coring and his staff, Chief Drew and his staff, Public Works Director Tom Stanley and his, his staff to ensure that everything remains smoothly and safely and cleaned up afterwards. So I just want to thank all of our staff members and volunteers and everybody who came out to make such a great celebration of our nation's birthday and the week of Fourth of July. Also want to recognize Chief Coring for being appointed by the General Assembly to be on the State 911 Board, which oversees the 911 systems in North Carolina. So he'll continue his service to the state there. I also want to recognize Fire Chief Drew for being selected as the new president of the Brunswick County Fire Chiefs Association. And he'll continue the great work there with our Brunswick County Chiefs as he leads them. And finally, tomorrow I will continue meeting with our local business owners tomorrow here in the community building at four o'clock for a regular monthly roundtable discussion. I will center our discussion mainly on the Fourth of July events and anything they'd like to bring forward. So I look forward to having that tomorrow with them. Thank you.
Okay, next is mayor's comments. There was, I was going to go down a different route, but I'll go stick to what happened today. There was a comment made that legal advice was prohibited to the planning board. So when that was comment was made, I leaned over, you showed me, leaned over to the manager and inquired. Noah, did you turn down the legal advice? And the answer was no. Certainly, I did not. So I'm not sure who did that. All I know is, and I'm not exclusive on this next sentence. I have been a great advocate and proponent to have more legal training for both the planning board and the Board of Adjustment. I have been that advocate for three years now and it's been like pulling hen's teeth, I think is a term, to try to get that to happen, but it has happened. The planning board has had training and at no time do I know of anything that would prevented the planning board at any time from requesting legal advice from our city attorney. I know, but but. So the question that that has been presented here when we're having public debate and public comment is whether or not we want to stick to the truth or not. And that what we heard was that that legal advice had been refused. I don't know how that happened. And it was inferred that I had something to do with that and I had nothing to do with that, nor did this gentleman over here have anything to do with it. If it had to do with another administration and other people that are not here, that's one thing. But the planning board and it got so much for the Board of Adjustment that we hired a separate attorney just to handle that case, that issue because there's a number of legal things that take place. And we were falling off the tracks. And we needed more training. I need training all the time. All the boards need training all the time. And if there's a problem, if you don't want to come to me with some, some refusal of help that you're asking for, you've got six other people and they will champion your cause to get whatever help that you need on the planning board or on the Board of Adjustment or any other committees that we have. If there's legal advice that has to happen, our job, as you, Alderman Carroll used to say to the clerk all the time, our job is to keep you out of trouble and to keep us out of trouble. And so if there's legal advice that needs to be had, please, no, I'm not having debate now. Wait, well, if you. So perhaps we can follow up on that after this meeting because if if there's a kink in the system, we need to fix that. Okay? And now the board comments. I'll start with Alderman Lay.
Nothing else to add today.
Alderman Spencer.
I want to congratulate the Fourth of July Committee. It was a tremendous, long week. The Sunday social and the gospel singing in the park was reminding me of the old times and it was kids laughing and and adults getting a bunch of ice cream as well. So that was really nice to see. It's been a good week. It's a big event, lot of money spent. It's, we're appreciative of the people that donate all the time and money to do this. We really couldn't afford to do this without outside help and continually let it get bigger and bigger and give it away for free. But it was a great week. And so I noticed on another issue on the 400 block of Atlantic Avenue, we have some signs that went up directing people to some parking on that 400 block. And it goes to one side, which is in between Atlantic and Howe. But on the left-hand side, there's an area that could be also included in that parking that we need to sort of go and determine what is ours and what is not ours there. Because that's prime a place to add a little bit of space. So I appreciate you, we had talked about that Noah and and all of a sudden I saw the sign. So I appreciate you following through in that. Ultimately, we want that parking lot to connect with low white and all the connectivity that we worked on with the bridge and things like that. So it's important. Thank you, that's it.
Alderman Kelly.
I'd like to thank the Fourth of July Festival Committee. It was a lot of moving parts to make everything happen. I am proud to be the liaison to the board and was on the board prior to my appointment or my election to the Board of Aldermen. So that's a that's a cause that I grew up with and feel very strongly about. I think this year was fantastic. I think that there were a lot of happy people around Southport this, this past week. And from the opening ceremonies all the way to the end of the fireworks and the music on on that main stage after the fireworks, it was fantastic to see our first responders out and paying attention and around. And at the very end, I was escorting Miss Teen North Carolina because she stayed until the bitter end when they finished dance, finished the music. And we were walking on Howe Street and I saw our chiefs down there with their teams getting ready to push everything out. I saw Elena and her team down there at the waterfront getting ready to get things cleaned up. And I saw Tom Stanley and his team standing there on Howe Street getting ready to make things happen. And we can't do this without every single one of those people and I am so thankful for all of them. I do want to mention also Up Your Arts and how they helped with the music throughout. It's fantastic and there's not a better way that that could be done. And Beautification and the Garden Club for making the Garrison House look absolutely fantastic. It really brings this, this whole community together in the best way possible and I thank everyone for their support. So thank you.
Alderman Davis.
Thank you. I'm actually going to make a committee report, which is Parks and Recreation meets on the third Tuesday of every month at the Parks and Recreation Building, which is next to the gym on North Atlantic. And so that's July the fifteenth. We'll be welcoming the new members, the reappointed members, the existing members. I hope that the public will come and see how much work is done and how dedicated everyone is. I will add one thing about board appointments. Although we appointed someone unanimously with a great deal of experience on that board, there were two people who had been on the board for quite a while and were quite well qualified, but we selected others for good reason. We felt that they had a great deal to contribute and we wanted some fresh ideas, hard workers. Thank you.
Alderman Carroll. Alderman Mosteller.
Thanks, sir. I have a lot I would like to say, but I I just to redirect about that question about planning board members asking for legal advice. I think that was said in an actual meeting. If I'm not mistaken, a meeting I attended that when they were discussing the the conversation about conditional zoning and all of that. about conditional zoning and all of that conversation, they, they mentioned, I believe, to staff about the need for legal conversation, and I, I don't think I'm making that up.
Well, if any, just for, for, obviously for you and for everybody, if any committee thinks that they need legal advice and they get turned down by anybody on the staff, then they have seven people that they can go to, and I encourage them to do that. If, if someone's asking for legal advice, as we often turn to the clerk for, for help and making sure that, as Robert would say, keep us out of jail, or we'll turn to Brady when he's sitting here, I want to make sure everybody understands that I think we're unanimous to say, give them legal advice.
I, I appreciate that, but that, that is a, a process, they, they would deal with staff and with, they work through the process, coming to us, that's not really for us to rein in.
We'd be the last resort.
Correct.
If they got turned down.
And, and, so that, but to me, anyway, I, I'm just saying, so I don't think any of this was not, was fabricated, I just want to address your concern about that you thought it wasn't truthful.
I'll take back my, can I take back my town? Because I-
Because I like you, yes, yes, sir.
I actually think that, as I recall it, it had to do with the development agreement, which was outside of the purview of the planning board. So if legal advice was requested at that time, I believe, as I recall it, it had to do with the development agreement, which was outside of the, and, and it was, a decision was made that, no? Okay, well, that's just how I recall it.
Okay, Alderman Masala, continue.
I guess this is directly to Larry, because you brought this up. Did you specifically ask for legal advice and were turned down, or did you get legal advice that you did not feel was helpful?
And, and we can follow that up after this.
And for those at home that didn't hear that, Larry Ashley said, yes, they asked for it, and yes, they were turned down.
Go ahead.
Yeah, well, I, 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 I'm, can say that I'm profoundly disappointed in the result of that conversation, because when a volunteer steps up and invests as much energy and time into being better for the community they love, for me, being replaced by someone who's been in town for a year regardless of whatever their things are, is unprecedented.
I would entertain a motion to go into closed session under North Carolina Statute 143-318-111 to consider qualifications and competence and performance of the individual, it's an HR issue, and to have a conversation about legal contracts.
So move.
So there's a motion, is there a second to that motion? Has a motion and a second? Is there any conversation? Not hearing, all in, all in favor, please say aye. Is there any opposed? It's unanimous, we're in closed session, thank you very much.
I'd like to entertain a motion to come out of closed session. There's a motion and is there a second? There's motion and a second, is there any discussion? Not hearing any, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? We're out of closed session. And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any conversation? Not hearing any, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? It's unanimous, we stand adjourned, thank you.